Good evening, everyone. It's Thursday, December 1st, 2016. Calling to order the Board of Selectmen meeting for the town of Hingham. Before we get into the regular matters, I'd ask that the chief join us at the table. I think he has some information for the citizens of the town. Bits of importance and of interest to all of us. So, chief, if you would.
Good evening. Hingham Police Chief Glenn Olson. I just wanted to update the board on a recent event that occurred today. After a three-day trial at the Plymouth Superior Court, a jury deliberated for two hours before finding Sergeant Chris Phillips guilty of one count of misleading a police investigation and two counts of filing a false insurance claim. Judge Gary Nickerson sentenced Phillips to two years in Duke's County House of Correction with six months to serve, and the balance suspended for three years. As part of his sentence, Phillips is also ordered to pay $1,900 in restitution and may no longer represent himself or work as a law enforcement officer. Phillips cannot possess firearms and must surrender his license to carry firearms. At this time, I have no further comments, and I refer all questions to the Plymouth County District Attorney's Office. I would also advise the board at this time to also refer all questions to Plymouth County DA's office. I do have copies available of the Plymouth County DA's office press release for anybody that would be interested in having enough supplied the board with the copy of that press release also.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Sobering news. Let's turn to approval of the minutes. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of November 29th, 2016.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Good job, Sally.
Thank you.
Comments from the public? Hearing none. Let's get right to one of the major items on tonight's agenda, and that's the budget hearing. Ladies and gentlemen, this is something that, for those of you that follow us, at this time of year, we begin a series of hearings on the budget, and this will take place over course of meetings. Mr. Lexiades will report to us. We typically have the department heads, several of whom are here in the audience tonight, and if there are any questions that we have, we'll kind of flush them out as this unfolds. So, this is going to be one of many meetings that we have. Mr. Lexiades, if there's anything you'd like to fill in?
Sure. What I'd like to do is give the board, community, a brief overview of the start of the budget process. And what I would ask you to do is orientate yourself to your budget books. On page Roman numeral 14 is the beginning of the five-year forecast. The book, as is laid out in the past, has a budget overview, introduction budget overview, and a schedule of my recommendations to the board, which includes recommendations on all budgets other than the school budget. The school budget is being maintained in the forecast at the same starting point that all the town budgets were, at 2%. Again, I want to reiterate, that's not meant to be the budget for the school committee, but the starting point in the forecast model. School committee, advisory committee, will work on that and forward that budget to you. In fiscal 2018, we're looking at a very flat revenue year, year-over-year from fiscal 2017. We're projecting gross revenues to be approximately $105,850,000, and that's a slight increase over $105,700,000 the previous year. So, as you can see, not a lot of revenue growth. The expenditure side of things improved dramatically the past few weeks. As the board members know, we were looking at deficits that were well past $2 million if we'd folded in the department requests and the healthcare initiatives that we were faced with. Thankfully, pursuant to your meeting on Tuesday, the Public Employee Committee and all the unions in town agreed to move our healthcare plans to the Group Insurance Commission from the Mayflower Group. That transfer will save the town considerable dollars, which you'll see when you get into the healthcare budget, and really allowed us to get to this point in the budget. What you see here is a budget that is still in deficit, a deficit of $746,000. That deficit, while three-quarters of a million dollars does sound like a lot, it's one of the lower deficits that we've started the budget process out with. We usually meander through this. I remind you, though, that it also doesn't include some school numbers. Some of the highlights on the budget that I've done for you is begin to address some long-term liabilities that you need, one of which is snow and ice, and starting to shift some money from other accounts into trying to meet some of that obligation, considerably behind the pace in that. And again, we'll get into that in more detail when we get into the budgets for healthcare. In respect to the departments, we asked all town departments to submit two budgets this year. One budget was a budget similar to the budgets in past years, which allows the department, we call it a level services budget, so if they've had increased areas of demand, they can request additional resources to meet those demands. By and large, we didn't see any of that within the town budgets, and the requests were fairly modest for additional requests for new initiatives this year. They were all afforded an opportunity to consider those requests, but my guess is that departments are aware of our fiscal situation and tempered a lot of their thoughts. You have tonight the assessors, the health department, town clerk, treasurer collector, trustees, and all the selectmen suite of budgets, and I will begin walking you through those as each of the departments come up.
Can I just make a comment if I could? Thank you. So, just with respect to the overall budget, and I think it might kind of help people and help this board, because it's a whole lot of different numbers and things. If you look at our revenue for this year, our revenue is only forecasted to grow, it's about $150,000, is that right, Ted?
Correct.
So, that's basically, you know, it's the 2.5% tax levy, our new growth has dropped off, but essentially, next year in this forecast, we will only be bringing in $150,000 more than we have in past years. And just to put that in perspective, if you look at our costs, they've been growing by about 4% a year, which on $100 million is about $4 million. So, therein is a little bit of the dilemma, which is that the kind of organic growth in our costs, which is a couple million dollars a year, is not being supported by the revenue this year. And so, I think we've got our work cut out for us, which we always do, but I would further add that in the past five years in particular, when we've had a budget deficit of this magnitude, we've often seen savings in health insurance come in at the very end that have given us like half a million dollars in savings, and we're not going to have that this year. So, you know, not to paint a picture of gloom and doom, but to say that the revenue being more constrained this year is, I think, going to make this a little bit more challenging. And I know that all of the departments and the school department are mindful of that. We love hearing about the different initiatives because we think that that's an important part of the work, but I would also just say that I think we're going to have to temper that with what this revenue picture looks like, and because the revenue picture is not just looking like that for this year, but the next couple of years.
So, one thing that will begin to start changing, and I have not included it in the forecast at this point in time, is the increased build-outs, building permits, and tax revenue growth that you'll see from the 40B projects that have been permitted within the last year, and partly because we need to see them move through the process before we start banking on that income. But you're likely to see, you know, close to a half a million dollars in a building permit for each project and close to a similar amount in tax revenue once the buildings get on board, and so those numbers will filter in here. I will remind you right now and several times throughout this process on those building permits, you know, those are things that we really can't increase, we can't fold into the operating budget. They're one times, they're going to happen once, and they're not going to happen again. So, those are things that we think about for one-time money. We will receive one building permit probably within this fiscal year that we're in currently, which will increase our fund balance, of course, and one the following fiscal year.
Paul, any questions?
All right. So, our first budget tonight is the assessors department. What I'll do is give you a brief overview of each of these budgets and then let the departments walk you through primarily the additional items that they're looking for and some changes, if any, that they have in the budget. The assessors' budget appears on page 14 of your budget book. The assessors' budget request was $388,838. They had no additional requests. I approved all of the additional, all of the budget requests. There is an increase of $61,755. It's a large increase, 18.8%. We don't consider an additional request, and I will let Mr. Nowlan explain to you.
Hi. Good evening. Rick Nowlan, Director of Assessing. As Ted said, for salaries, the only changes was the step increases, and for expenses to the office, there was no change from fiscal 17. Our revaluation in consulting went up 18%, and this is because we're in a revalue year certification year. It's always been every three years, but you may have heard that the governor and legislator signed a bill, it's going to be five years from now on, so that will be saving the town money. So, the next one after fiscal 18 won't be fiscal '23, so that's something to look forward to. We all know that revale has to be complete. The question is, how do we complete it? In-house or continue with Vision as we have? We've studied it, we've looked at the savings to the town. We believe that staying with Vision would save the town $100,000 over the next, over a five-year period, because we would have to hire additional staffing. So, the board's happy, we're happy with Vision Services. We did do an RFP already. We have, we selected Vision, the board selected Vision, for $62,000. We have a quote from our personal property for $23,900. For $125,000 total, we believe we can do the revaluation of the real estate, the property, our personal property, plus do all the inspections required, including building permits. Any questions?
I just want to bring the board back to some perspective. This budget, I wish sometimes you could go back a few years, but this budget was considerably higher a few years earlier than you can see on the sheet in '15. So, I think in 2010, for example, this budget was much higher than this, partly because we had in-sourced the revaluation. We had an assessor in Rick's position, and we had data collectors that would go out and essentially value the properties, and we did it internally. When we needed to buy a new computer system, we found that outsourcing the entire operation became much more beneficial to us. The private companies can put in a large group of data collectors quickly, cover a town, and move out, so the labor costs have been substantial on our savings, and we have a computer system that we essentially got out of those savings.
Rick, I guess just the question I have, because we have the benefit of having you here tonight, but for the benefit of the audience and, you know, for homeowners, at the conclusion of this revaluation, what, you know, what will the homeowner see coming out of that?
It's probably too early to say for sure. What we've already, we actually revalue every year, even though it's, the state gets involved on a regular cycle, the three-year and now the five-year, but we're constantly reviewing the sales, the neighborhoods. We've changed several neighborhoods this year, and overall, the whole town values went up about 5%, but doesn't mean everybody's going to go up 5% for this year, for fiscal '17. Fiscal '18, between Vision and I, we'll be working on looking at the sales from calendar year '16. We will be inspecting all these sales, we'll be doing a quick review of the whole town. So, it's too early to say what values will do. It all depends on how we see the sales from fiscal '16. Some neighborhoods might go up, it's possible some could go down, so it's tough to say in a broad brush what's going to happen, but we will do the best to give an fair estimate to the whole assessment for every property in town, and we're always there to answer any questions. Abatement processes coming up in January. Don't forget to file in January, only until February 1st, and that's the deadline, but if you ever have any questions, we're available. We're also conducting cyclical inspections, and there's been a lot of questions about that, calls, but this is just a normal process. We're just updating information, correcting, make sure we have the correct information. Are we having too many bathrooms? Do we have a shed that was taken off that shouldn't be there? Inspectors will be out there, they'll identify themselves. You don't have to let them in. Sometimes it's better to let them in to get the information correct, but please verify the information with the inspector. They'll measure the house, they'll take pictures. But again, always call us if there's any questions at all, but again, it's hard to say overall what's going to happen for, as far as the values at this point.
Thank you.
The track record that we've had with abatements and exemptions here in the town during my 20-plus career has been astounding. DOR used to have a standard that you needed to set aside 2% of your tax levy to meet your abatements and exemptions. For us, you know, that would be 1.2 million. We set aside 350, and that's an increase from 250 that we carried for 15 some-odd years. I can only recall one year where we had an inundation of abatements and assessment issues, and that was in 2009, '10 period.
Eleven with the changeover.
During the economic collapse of the real estate market of epic proportions and the revale at the same time. And I think since then, we've seen it return right back to where it ordinarily is. Very few people file for abatements.
I have a question.
Sure.
With respect to the people that show up at the door, how does the resident know that they're talking to the assessors' office?
Well, they identify themselves, most of the cars are identified. We have, Vision has labeling on the car, we have labeling on one of our, two of our cars that people go out and look at, not our cars, but inspectors have cars and they put labels on it. They also have badges of some kind. We don't have anything officially from the town, but we're looking into that right now, but they have appraisal licenses or identification that they're from Vision or another company. They knock at the door, if they see, if it's only a child home, they walk away. They don't go in backyards if nobody's home, so they're very careful. I know there's been some phone calls, but they do try to be very careful about the situation.
Does, some of my neighbors have said that the sale of houses in the neighborhood triggers the neighborhood being reassessed. Is that accurate?
Well, if there's a trend, okay? If there's, say, one sale in the neighborhood or in the street, we'll say a street, any street, Smith Street, whatever, say there's one sale, that wouldn't trigger necessarily change in values, but say there were three sales on Smith Street, and they're all coming in 10%, 20% higher than the assessment value, then that would probably trigger a further review and possibly an increase in the neighborhood. We did increase five or six neighborhoods this year, streets, you know, maybe going around five to four, something like that, you know? But we're seeing, in addition, you're looking at the whole town when values go up as a whole, so sometimes it's a question of cost or land values going up, but neighborhoods could be a big change if we see a trend, but only if we see that.
Okay. Thank you.
Just, thank you again, Rick. The, just kind of what we have here, obviously, that, did you say in the last year, the property values, on average, went up about 5%?
Well, overall, if you look at, like, the old to new values from fiscal '16 to '17, they went up about 5%, but that's including everything, so I'd have to look at individually. I would say single-family residential probably went up slightly higher than that overall, but again, it varies on the neighborhood, too, you know? If you look at the, probably Crow Point or certain sections have gone up higher than others.
Right. Is there a certain consistency over the last couple of years with those numbers? Is that?
I would say yes. I would say it's been fairly consistent going the last couple of years, and this concern what's going to happen in the future, we don't know, right?
And just so folks at home may understand it, the, I know the budget isn't a huge number, but the increase is 18.18%.
Right.
Can you maybe just explain, I know you may have already done that, but just explain that as to the number, because we do have the luxury most times of having much lower numbers than that.
Sure.
I want people to get the perspective.
Sure. As far as the, just the revaluation part, that includes, out of the $125,000, that includes $62,000 for Vision for their certification, $23,900 for RRC who does our personal property, the balances for the inspections for permits, cyclical sales review as required by the Department of Revenue, and it totals $125,000.
That's a, most, those are all, I don't want to say one-time money, but I guess one-time every five-years now money, so the budget's going to go down next year by a substantial percentage.
Right. We've been averaging about $67,000, so it should go back to similar to what it has in the past.
Well, that was kind of my follow-up point, was that even though that's the case, you said the next evaluation would be five years, and so these costs won't be in, and the budget would go down.
Oh, that's right. Yeah, we should.
Whereas if we in-sourced this, it's one of the reasons why we outsource it. If we in-sourced it, then we'd have those people for three or five years.
Right. We'd cut, we'd save about a hundred grand, I think.
That's right.
And if you look at Rick's budget, absent, so the revaluation services is just about a $60,000 increase, the whole rest of the budget's only going up by $4,000. So, this is a, I think if you look at the rest of the budget, what you see is, is the assessors' office able to do all the great work that they're doing, and if you exclude that item, it's just about a flat budget.
Right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much for coming in.
Any other questions?
Thanks, Rick.
Thank you.
Good night.
All right. Your next budget is the Health Department. I see our Health Director, Bruce Catman, here. Join us at the table, Bruce. The Health Department budget will appear in the Human Services section on page 105. And I'll give you my recommendations. As an overview, another fairly straightforward budget for me, Bruce didn't really give me much work to do this year. The budget request came in at $332,206. It represents a $428 decrease over last year. Same level of services. Sir?
Primarily, the savings that we were able to get is a change in personnel. We've had two positions vacate and two new employees enter that, so the step raises, our step, base, bottom line payroll is lower because of that. As far as our activities and our expenses, I saw no need to raise them or request any additional monies. That's about it for us. Like Ted said, we're actually requesting less money than we did last year.
I have no questions. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. You don't get them very often, I'm just going to let you guys know.
You know, we can't let you go without one question, but this is the first year that you had those, this past year, we funded additional hours for those, for the sanitary in positions, and a lot of that was some of the inspections and partnering with the sewer department, particularly with the fats, oils, and greases. I'm just kind of wondering how that's all going this year.
We work closely with the sewer department, and they're doing the sewer line inspections with cameras, and when they see grease in the lines, and we get involved with enforcement in getting most of our restaurants back up and running and making sure they're not skimping on grease.
And I know that they inspect the grease traps, right?
The indoor.
And I know that some of the reason that we added some of those sanitary hours last year was that, and I would just say that particularly in light of, you know, all the wonderful restaurants in town and that, you know, just when you think we have enough restaurants, another one opens up, that work is just so important, and the partnership with the sewer department is terrific as well because it just, it just kind of makes it all work, work very, very well.
Yeah. We, believe it or not, we have almost 170 food establishments in this town. We added.
I see the meals tax, so I believe it.
So, you know, we got one part-time food inspector. We get into every establishment a minimum of twice a year, and for those that need more, we pick up these, pick up on them and get more inspections on them. We also have, as part of our budget, that if we have to go back because, and there were a number of things that needed to be corrected, we add a $50 surcharge on their permit for next year.
Good.
Just a quick follow-up to Mary's point, and you were talking about some things you're doing over the past year. Is there anything you can foresee in the future that's going to take up, you know, man-hours or additional costs, that's something that might be coming down the road a little bit that we need to be aware of?
Well, even though the revenues are lower, we are seeing many more building permits coming in, and we sign off on all of those. We see a lot of sales in town, and of course, with Title V, more reinspections and about, oh, I'd say probably 10%, 12% of those inspections require an additional upgrade, so we're seeing an increase on all that. Not only is it more money for the town, but it's protecting our aquifer much better than it has been, although it isn't, it's fine right now, but we don't want to ever run into the problem that, in the future, that we have a problem.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good night, Bruce.
Good night.
Your next budget is your Town Clerk budget on page 26, and welcome, Eileen.
As an overview, the Town Clerk budget, you're going to see just a few of these this year. This one is for a particular reason, but Eileen requested $185,040. Made my job extremely easy because it's an $85,900 decrease year-over-year, and I'll let Eileen explain.
There's really not a big change in my budget. I do have a little bit, a little change in my clerical because I have, my now assistant wants to become part-time, so she's going back to the position she was at before, and I am now advertising for a new assistant. So, the dynamic of the numbers there will change, are, yeah, will change, are changing.
So, again, you're seeing the step increase, same thing in the Board of Health, as personnel turn over, you know, the difference between top step and low step does provide some issue.
Right. But other than that, everything is pretty much the same.
Eileen, anything that you see, maybe it's kind of a similar question, coming down that needs that you're going to have in the future, or that we should be aware of?
Not under the Town Clerk budget, I don't think.
Okay.
No.
Thank you.
But we have Eileen here for a second budget unless you have, I don't want to cut your questions off on her.
I'd just like to make a comment. I would like to thank you for the excellent work you did on the national election. I thought that went pretty smooth, and I enjoyed the early voting.
I was lucky to have a lot of support. Kate Richardson was a big, a big part of it. She helped because we were able to use the process that we go into town meeting to check people in and out, and I had several poll workers that were very willing and able to help. It was real, it was great, and it was kind of enjoyable because some of the people that we usually have at the different schools, they were able to combine each other and see how the other, who is at the other end of town and things like that. So, it was, and we did get a lot of good feedback, which was nice.
As did we, by the way, too. Thank you again.
Yes.
It's not listed in your agenda, but we historically do the election budget along with the Town Clerk budget. That appears on page 28. That was our issue with Eileen. And this is another budget, which I'm sure you're not going to have tremendous difficulty with. Eileen requested $17,695, and I approved all of them, representing a $23,000 decrease year-over-year.
And the reason for that is that in fiscal year '18... And the reason for that is that in fiscal year 18, I will only have, hopefully, one election. After the six elections that we had this year, I gratefully will receive one election in a year. It was, it was quite a year.
Yeah. It was quite a year. Still going.
I know, I know.
I would also say that with those six elections, though, they all went flawlessly. And for people who were both working on elections and all the very important work that goes on in the Town Clerk's office, it, everybody was as professional, as courteous, and as effective. I think in, in, you know, it just, you made it look easy. We hopefully, doesn't mean we're going to give you six elections again, but I just, it was so impressive to watch you and your team kind of roll with all of it, and while still making sure that the, all of the Town Clerk work didn't, didn't fall through the cracks. So I'd echo the comments of my colleagues, and just thank you so much for that.
That's nice to hear, because it, I really did not know how to handle it, and I, I think that we really did a good job.
You did a great job.
Yes, thank you.
Put a lot of time in, too. People don't get all this information.
A lot of time, yes. I was exhausted at the end of it. I was dragging my old broken leg around.
Well, we, we were aware of the fact that you regularly beat our earliest recipient in the building, Sue Hickerson, on a regular basis.
I greeted her in the morning. But thank you, I appreciate that, and I will pass that on to many people in my office.
Thank you so much.
The other thing that I did not mention, and I really should, is that when we had the, the election, that we had all of the write-ins. I did have some high school students help me, and I haven't done anything for them yet, and I want to do some kind of thing for them, and I haven't figured out what to do. But they were great. They came to each one of our precincts, and they helped out, and, and they, they were excellent. They, they really loved doing it, and we, we loved having them, too. It was, it was super. One of the teacher, Chrissy, I can't remember her last name, I'm sorry.
O'Connor.
O'Connor, yes. She's, she's terrific. She's very good with the students, and, and they helped out a lot. So it's, it has truly been quite a year.
Good to see that participation at that age level.
It is, it is. So am I done? Thank you, everyone.
Thank you so much for coming in.
Thanks.
All right. Your next budget is the Town Treasure Collector. Jean Montgomery, please join us. Appears on page 18. And the Treasure Collector's budget came in at a request of 391,610, which represented a zero-dollar increase over last year, which I find somewhat remarkable, that we were able to, just exact dollar. Rarely that it's exact dollar.
Kind of made that happen with the.
I'll let Jean explain to you.
What happened, and it is interesting, because the level services budget ended up being the same as a level-funded budget would be, and a little bit of that was by design. But the savings of the 1,216 in payroll was simply a stroke of luck for my department, because it had to do with the number of days in the fiscal year between the fiscal year 17 and fiscal year 18. So it's a few days shorter in fiscal 18, so they, we need $1,200 less. At the same time, my expenses, the escalation clause in the printing contract, and some postage increases were, were close. They were, they're a little more than the 1,216, but I'll absorb the rest of that in my budget, and I called it even. So it was nice to see a zero there.
Yeah.
So that's the explanation.
Should I say, right, thank you?
I'd like to thank you as well. And in particular, you take good care of the Flag for Soldiers account, so very pleased with that. And it's always a pleasure to interact with you, so thank you so much for your work.
Thank you, thank you very much. I have an easy budget compared to a lot of the departments, so this is a nice meeting for me to come to.
Nice to hear from you.
We'll try to keep it that way.
And as you know, Jean heads up the capital outlay process for us.
So I'm well aware of what some of the other departments with big responsibilities.
Can you make that level-funded? Can you work your magic on that one?
Nope, mine's easy, so thank you very much.
Jean, thank you so much.
Thank you for coming in. All right. Your next budget is the Trustees of the Bathing Beach. And I see the Chairman of the Board of Trustees, Mr. Perrall, and Ed Johnson. Ed, are you, I don't know, did I get the chair wrong?
I'm the chair.
Okay.
He's the vice chair.
So the Trustees' budget appears on page 142 in your budget book. And as a quick overview, the trustees came in, we're starting to see a pattern. 39,592 operating budget request for 18. I recommended the entire amount. It represented a $4 increase over the prior year. This is one of our, generally our stable, smaller budgets, but nevertheless, it's another one in that same venue.
Yes. Actually, before we get to our budget, I know you gave Eileen McCracken a number of kudos. It's just a committee. The way she can continually post meetings for us when she's in the middle of six elections, and I'll be honest, I'm getting agendas to her sometimes that are just barely making the 48-hour notification. And she's doing that for everybody. And I've never found a time that those weren't posted, and those are the small things that don't get noticed. And anybody who puts in a request to use the Bathing Beach, and now that we've improved it, we get more requests than ever. I think we have three different polar plunges coming during the wintertime. Eileen, God bless them, and I wouldn't do it, but, but Eileen is very quick to get that to me, or notify us that they're in, and to process that information very quickly. Again, it's not a money thing, but it's just a town efficiency thing that I think is, and I'm sure I speak for a lot of committees, that, you know, she, she does such a good job on, you know.
Thank you for mentioning that.
Yeah. It's, it's really appreciated for us. As Ted noticed, we're essentially the same. We did, Ed can probably elaborate a little bit more. We did go up in our salaries a little bit, because on our lifeguards, we don't have a lot. We just have the seasonal period from the Fourth to Labor Day. So I'll let Ed kind of explain.
Well, when the season was beginning, I looked into to see what the DCR lifeguards were making in, up in the city of Boston, where I was a lifeguard at one time. And we were roughly a dollar fifty short of what the DCR were making. So we brought up to the 13 and change salary, which helped the job applicants, because we're getting the same pool around the general area.
And we weren't getting many applicants either, by the way. Yeah.
So, and we did that, we upped the salary, because they have to have their lifeguard certificates, and they have to have their first aid certificates. So it's a little bit more than any of the high school or college kids. But we, what we do find, too, is that the end of the season, it's hard to keep them on, because if they're college students, they're going off to school in mid-August. So that's been a problem that we're seeing on every year. At the end of the season, we had such, we didn't have anybody on board on, on Labor Day, because they're all back to school at that time. And a lot of the high school students play high school sports, so they're, they're in the season at that point already. So that's been a kind of a problem that we have. And everybody else has that same problem, too, at the same time.
But, you know, despite that, we, you know, the deficit we made up with, we do get a small stipend from the farmer's market for them using it, and we made up the deficit, and we will this year with that stipend. So that's the reason we don't, and I'm hoping, I think as you probably were, the RFP for the bathhouse is out. Realistically, that's going to be a project that probably won't be generating revenue until probably 2018, if I were to guess. But I believe that that should be a positive thing as well. You know, that, and then the meeting room, which should generate some revenue. So hopefully, that should offset the increases we'd have down the road, and if anything, allow us to diminish. We also, by the way, do the goose control out of, you know, all the way from, you know, the Iron Horse to the Grove. And so that's actually about 15,000 of our budget.
Well, what, so what's, you know, we're sort of like two years into it now, but what, what was the experience this year?
I think it was a little bit better. They were, the winter wasn't as severe. One of the, part of the treatment is they actually addled the, the eggs, you know, some of them are off the islands. And obviously, the winter before last, that was an impossibility. So I think it was better this spring. And even though we didn't have heavy rain, you get enough at certain times that if, heaven forbid, if we get a torrential rain right after we do an application. It's usually okay for a light rain, but, you know, I would say overall was more successful this past year. I mean, it's a little thing we have to stay on, and we may even look to have, he was going to augment it with some dogs, and we may look to do that in the spring, just a little bit to stop the habits. The more you addle the eggs, the less the, the baby geese come back. If you can stop, it's almost an imprint. They come back to the same spot where they've, they've kind of fed. So the more you break it, the more likely that it'll diminish. So it is an ongoing thing, and you can't stop it.
I remember a couple of years ago, I think we had to, like, we learned that we had to add a treatment, like, super early in the springtime, because if you don't kind of hit that window, you're, you know, you're kind of starting in a deficit.
And we're obviously extremely cognizant when we're getting close to the Fourth, you know, because of, as you're aware, and now that the beach has been improved, we have even more people down there. So, I mean, it's a product of success, but people are going to notice it even more if we're not doing a diligent job.
Yep.
And also part of the problem is with the heavy rain in the parking lot, the standing water, because they're drinking the water. And when that parking lot's been done over, hopefully that standing water problem will be resolved.
We're not going to do it until we finish the bathhouse, because we don't want to tear it up. But I mean, that is a very good point. I mean, it's a problem for the farmer's market, if you see them squeeze you on a Saturday morning when it's raining or Friday night. But also, the problem is that's where they, they need to get fresh water. And if we can, we're going to drain that better, and so hopefully, again, a year or two down the road, that's going to make the situation improved.
Thank you.
Is there a freshwater source on the other side of 3A?
Not really, Paul. I mean, it's brackish water, you know, so I think, they just have to have one, they'll still come back to the grass, though. I mean, you know, they need to be near some, but, you know, that's why they're so bad by the high school, because there are some freshwater sources near there. But I, I think they can, anywhere where water puddles, and obviously, we're just, we can only limit our own area, but if there's any area near there where there's puddling and water is holding the, you know, they do have a source, so.
I'd say you guys, as always, are on top of things, and we look forward to some of the feedback from the RFPs, and I'd say, Ed is a former lifeguard up in Boston as well. It's always, we've got to take care of our lifeguards, you know, they do a good job, so.
They do. And in fact, one of them even made, I don't know if you, Ed saw the lifeguard chair. We have a high, you know, because of the, the snow fence we put in, it was hard to see the bathhouse, so, you know, Clark, our head lifeguard, made an enormous lifeguard chair that, you know, was, is able to, one thing, see out a lot better over the water, but sees the whole parking lot and everything else as a result. And did it, you know, I think with just material cost, which was like $100 or something.
He had assistance from one that had an assistant habit, that's all.
Right. So, you know, we've, and as you know, we also painted the building this year and some other things like that, and I think the cost of that was just paint and materials and getting lunch for the guys at the sub-galley. So, you know, we, we squeeze a dollar as much as we can.
Trying to save it, huh?
That's right. Yes, find them.
Thank you so much.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, Bruce.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right. We're going to switch to the other side of the table now. The next group of budgets, Tom Mayo will present to you, and I'll give you the overviews. And I'll, I'll jump in a little bit here on some of them. The first budget will be the Selectmen's budget. The Selectmen's budget appears on page two, as an overview for the budget. Department request was 526,607. It was an additional request of 70,000, which I approved, recommending to you for 596,607 budget, a 73,603, 605 dollar year-over-year change. The bulk of that is the additional request, of course. That's a new position, and I'll let Tom take you through that.
I tell you, I was feeling pretty good about the minimal $3,000 increase until I heard some of these other budgets, $4 and flat, and, you know, I apologize. The power's high in England. As you can see, there's pretty, it's a pretty straightforward budget over last year. The expenses are very much flat. The salaries, the main, the main item I would draw your attention to is a $70,000 request for a grant writer. I think that our thoughts, as it relates to the grant writer, is that's a likely revenue source over time, as opposed to a, to a cost. I think, and I can just simply read the justification that I've written in the, in the report. Having a full-time grant writer on staff will allow the town to pursue federal, state, and private grants of all kinds for any and all appropriate purposes, rather than pursuing grants only when staff time allows, or a staff member takes special initiative to pursue one. This will set the town up to greatly increase revenue for town projects from sources outside of Hingham, and in many cases, recover for Hingham residents federal and state tax dollars. So that's the intent behind that request.
So, you know, this request has been on the table for a few years now. I've pulled it back each year. I'm going to push for this one this year, because as I look at the revenue picture, and I see decreasing revenues, and I know that you are constantly pressured with more demand for services, we're going to have to find some alternative revenue sources. I believe the state revenues will continue to be flat and taper. They have some, you know, budget increases that they're going to have to deal with. And, and also the fact that we've had a good run with them for a couple of years tells me that usually it comes in cycles, too. Clearly, our growth on, on property taxes is going to be somewhat flat, with the exception of those 40B projects. There is no significant economic development happening in the, in those areas. So this is going to be an area, I think, where we can try to work with the school department, the, you know, the police, fire, DBW, our major departments, to sort of address some funding issues. And, and by looking at a full-time professional grant writer, we're trying to focus a little bit on money outside of the traditional federal and state grants. There are a lot of grant programs out there available that we just do not have the time to, or the knowledge, really, to focus on where they are and how they could benefit the community.
I think as we, you know, it's, we're so early in the process that I think we need to keep all of these requests kind of, you know, out there. I would say that as we get closer to the time when we're making budget decisions, an important question for me to understand would be that, you know, as you think about some of the grants, many of them are in specialty areas, you know. There's a land grant or a harbor grant, and, you know, just kind of how, how sort of that would work, and could you find some, you know, what are the skills that we're looking for that would kind of bring the expertise? But, you know, can you have a grant writer that, that does, you know, a harbor grant, and then a land grant, and then, you know, something else? I think if we're, if we're going to be looking at this, you know, it would, it would be helpful to the extent that we can to sort of identify what, how this would work, and what types of grants. And I realize that some of this is, we're probably not tapping into even what we know is out there. But it would, I think, just that information, as it goes further down the pike, will, will help us make, you know, an informed decision about it.
Two, two points. One, we've asked the HR Director to draft a job description. In order for a position to be created in the town budget, the Personnel Board has to approve the job description. So we're moving through that process. Whether they approve it or not, that's just an approval process. Funding needs to go through town meeting, obviously the Selectmen's advisory. But I think some of that job description will begin to flesh out some of the, the skill sets that a person in this occupation, and it is a professional occupation, it's out there now. You mentioned something about early in the process, and this is the first additional request you've seen. Advisory, I talked with Chairman Taylor several months ago. They anticipated having a lot of additional requests and not enough money to fund them all. I think he's, you know, he prognosticated pretty well. You'll be in that same boat. I suggested that he consider doing something that Advisory had done about a decade ago, where they just did what they called a set-aside list. And they, they simply took all of the additional requests, put them on one big list. And they, they simply took all of the additional requests, put them on one big list.
Yep.
And then at the end of the budget process, he looked at how much money they had available so that they could consider them all at the same time as opposed to, you know, you approve the grant writer now and then, you know, two weeks later, a month later, or four weeks later, you find out that, you know, there was another issue that you might have wanted more of. So I think that lets you sort of look at the whole picture and then pick at once what you want.
Yep. And I think what I'm suggesting is let's put our very best and strongest case forward for this additional request because chances are that the additional requests will probably outpace the available funds. So I, I think what, you know, what, what we want to make sure of is that every additional request, and clearly all of them have merit, let's put the best case forward for each one.
I'd like to see at some point, I know it's not going to happen tomorrow or whenever, but the job description is, Mary, when I was thinking about that myself, how are we going to maximize that with different theories?
We should be able to have that to you in draft form by your next meeting. Personnel board will take probably about a month to work through it. They have a process. They have staff or personnel board member that will go through it and then rate the job, et cetera. So that would take us a little bit longer and then the board actually goes through and approves it. But we'll have the draft of the, they're looking at for you next week.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Your next budget is your legal budget. Legal appears on page 21 as an overview. Legal was 232 last year and I am recommending the same amount this year and Tom will be giving you a little bit of an overview of some things he's working on for you.
I met the number. Right? Wasn't that the goal? No, this, you know, this one here obviously regularly goes over what this number is. Problem we have is we don't know what that number's going to be. So to increase it, to increase it to what, right? We don't know what that number's going to be year over year. So I think one thing to consider is while I don't have the breakdown for you yet in terms of what the expenses have been percentage-wise for the different categories of legal expenses, I think what you, what you, what we're hoping to see in FY18 is a decrease in, for instance, real estate matters where we've met our 40B requirements presumably now. And some of the other big ticket items here that.
A G M C lease.
G M C lease, right.
I mean, we've, as you well know, we've been using real estate counsel heavily on a lot of projects last few years. Some of those have come to fruition. Shortly we'll go through the resolutions we achieved with the Department of Interior for Bearcove Park. It's a three-year initiative on our part, working with them to address their issues. As you mentioned, you know, I know you, Mary and Paul know how long we've been working on the, the Hingham Maritime Lease and how much work Susan's put into that and that looks like it's coming to fruition conclusion. So as Tom mentioned, we have this issue every year. We know the expenses tend to exceed the budget, but we have no active cases. We have no active litigations that are driving those. We'll have to wait and see what comes and try to adjust accordingly in each year. And I do believe there is justification and it has occurred in years past where we've seen this number come under 232. You know, we, we tend not to get litigated against very often, so this means that this budget is usually self-determined at some level and I think you'll see some downturn.
What was that number? From, from this past year in the, I know it's 232. Do we have a ballpark? I mean, I know.
Expended from last year?
426.
426, 539.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
Thank you.
I think it'll be helpful to see that breakout.
Yep. Yeah, well, I'll have that prepared for you. Hopefully again at the next meeting, it's just as backup to this.
Yeah, and I know that typically at the end of the year, there's also like a flurry of activity. So if we don't get that until January when it represents the kind of, you know, the end of the calendar year, it, you know, that might be better anyway.
Okay, all right.
This is Tom's, as you know, this is Tom's first round of budgets here and rather unfairly, I, I pulled him away because I needed to, to have him work on the health insurance issues because it meant, you know, a seven-figure number for the town. So during a period of time when departments are free to think about their budgets and work through that, Tom was not and it was his first budget. So I think he did an excellent job.
Absolutely.
But you'll see some of the documents are going to come here next week.
Okay.
Okay. Our next budget is town meeting, appears on page 23 as an overview. The town meeting budget, Tom's now getting into the theme of things with the other departments. $3,192 was the request. I recommended that. $1,300 year-over-year. No additional requests and I'll let him explain the differences.
Sure. The, the differences are solely in the expense category. You see a $300 expense increase in the advertising services and a $1,000 in the warrant services. Those are simply the costs of doing business, increases in those expenses. That's what we're seeing.
And this is the operating assumption here is a two-night town meeting?
Yes, that's right.
All right. And then I think that one of the last larger budgets that Tom has to deal with is the town hall budget, appears on page 45 of your budget book. And as an overview, town hall began, the, the request came in at $656,609. It's the operating expense of this building. I approved that amount. It represents a $4,067 year-over-year change. Let Tom explain those changes.
Yeah, so it's, it's only a $4,000 increase. I say only, but what that represents is a $10,000 decrease in salaries. We've had, as you know, our long-term, former, longtime assistant town administrator retire and my replacement at a lower rate and, right?
No, no, that's Barbara McIntyre.
Oh, this is town hall. I'm sorry, that's the other one. We had a longtime retirement, retiree in custodial services retire. I'm sorry, I went back a little. And replace that, we'll be replacing that person with a step one custodian. And in the town hall expenses, you see for the most part, it's level funded. There is one relatively sizable increase of $5,000 in the food and supplies lunchroom I want to draw your attention to from $13,000 up to $18,000. Again, that's the cost of doing business in that operation.
And, you know, I think it suffices to say that we know it's not a, a profit center for the town. It is an employee benefit. We can certainly give you the, the total picture there of, of what, what we're spending there, but it's, the amount we're spending above what we're taking in is, is increased. I'm still recommending that you maintain the service. Which I should say is, is I think the statistics down there would say that it's an equal amount of town residents than it is employees. We get a lot of people who come to use the building for the senior center. After they finish an activity down there, they come up for a cup of coffee. A lot of people from the fitness room come up there and have something at lunch. So it's, it's interesting. I go in there periodically and I see a lot of people that don't work here, but they interact with our employees and have a nice time for lunch.
Do we have a, am I remembering that we have someone who was in the senior tax work off program?
We've had, we've had that position. I'm not sure if we use it every year. I think we used it last year. And again, that's a annual process to see if we can, A, find someone that fits. Are we using them now?
She's in there this year as well.
Great.
I think, you know, to the extent in that lunchroom, both, you know, for, for a lot of reasons in the cost, but, you know, whether it's someone in the tax work off program or, you know, perhaps one of, one of our high school students who is in the post, in the postgraduate program in terms of finding employment here in town. I think anytime we can do that, it's a great way to build community and at the same time operate the lunchroom in a, in a, in a fiscally prudent manner.
The next budget is the unclassifieds, your last budget of your book, appears on page 183 and this is a straight level funded from the previous year, I believe. Fiscal, the request this year is $10,950 and it's exactly what we spent last year. Unclassified budget is a grouping in municipal government that is a small grouping of items that don't fit in any of the classifications of government. We use, the printing of the town report goes in there and we could argue that goes in the town meeting, but the town report can be used for things other than town meeting. And also we have some clock repairs and things like that in there.
What was it on page 183?
Page 183 is the unclassified budget.
Go to 186.
Oh, is it typo? I'm sorry, 186. I was looking.
Yeah, it says 183 is the beginning of the classified section.
So again, a pretty straightforward budget, no, no changes whatsoever.
So if I'm looking at 186, is there additional requests or?
No. Level funded, exactly what we did last year, no change whatsoever.
Okay. Yeah, I was looking at 186 and there was a column of additional requests, but.
And the clocks are?
I think that's a grand total, Paul. I think it's like the end of the report.
Yeah, no, that's the, that's the total. Yeah, the last line there, the, the 40 million and 50 millions and 304s, those are the sum total of the entire budget.
I was wondering.
Expensive, expensive report this year.
Yeah. Mr. Healy, to answer your question, it's the, the caretaker of the clocks and a small amount for the repair of the clocks. It's all the clocks in town. Whether they're in front of the CPC for a project or not, irrelevant. We still have to get out there, wind them, maintain them, fix them. It's more of a.
Ongoing maintenance.
This is not a renovation. This is just a, an ongoing maintenance and repair.
All right. I just want to, in my mind, understand what clocks we're talking about, but I think you've answered that question. Tom, you have two more. You want to take it through the imperatives?
Sure. So page 122. These are in the human services category. We have two, in essence, grants, if you will, supporting two women's groups, one called Health Imperatives and the other called the Social Women's Health. These requests did not change from, over from last year. And, you know, these are important services that I think the town of Hingham has come to accustomed to support.
So these are regional services. The way these entities fund themselves is small contribution from a wide variety of towns within the, within the region. And they regularly give us reports. We're not allowed to make donations. It's against state law for municipalities to donate to other charitable organizations. So we actually get services from them. We get a report, lists the service, services they provided, a lot of it deals with domestic violence and other issues. I'm always surprised to see, you know, a large number of service claims they have. So, you know, they're, they're doing work here in the town and they're providing, I think, an outstanding service for a very rich.
I just would like, like, you know.
Microphone. I got it. I heard, I heard from the chairman that the voice quality at home is a little poor, so I'm going to be a little strict this cycle about making sure everybody speaks to the mic.
Hi, I just wanted to put a little plug into you for the Health Imperatives and the Social Women's Center. We work with them quite a bit in issues all over town. We've been involving them into the drug issues. They're working with the Veterans Councils as well and we're exposing them into many other fields. Part of the things that we also work with them for, just so you are aware, we work with them on some grants and they've been helpful and successful in getting other grants. So some of the money and the investment here that we're getting, there are services that are being provided to the police department and in turn, we're supplying them to people in town and helping victims. So I think it's really a great cause and we do get that money back in, in many, many ways.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, gentlemen.
This concludes your budgets.
My colleagues have any questions? Thank you, gentlemen, for your work on this. Look forward to continuing this conversation. We're, I'm sorry, gentlemen, that we're a little bit over. At this point in time, we're going to conduct interviews of three individuals with respect to a position for the, for patrolman's position on the Hingham Police Department. So at this time, we have them listed on our agenda. Is that how you wish to have them presented to you? Brian Lobianco. Before we begin, is the gentleman that's seated behind, is he an applicant or?
A supporter.
Supporter. Perfect.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Lobianco. Welcome to the town of Hingham. You're, you're before us tonight with respect to a position for patrolman.
Yes, sir.
Police department. What I'd like to do is hear a bit about you. My colleagues and I will have some questions and if there's any question that you have of us, we'll give you that opportunity to pose it as well. All right? So with that, would you introduce yourself to us? Tell us your background and we'll begin.
Well, to start, for those of you that don't know, my name's Brian Lobianco. I look at myself as an individual that's dedicated to his career, his success. I've learned this over the years through my background in customer service. From there, I've learned the skills to deal with people on a day-to-day basis as well as the skills that I've learned. I consider myself a team player. That doesn't mean I can't work alone, though. I also, I'm very motivated to the job that I work in and I believe that I would love to be a police officer in this department because this is where I developed most of the values and ethics that I have from day-to-day growing up in this educational system.
In this town?
Correct.
Okay. Well, thank you. Would either one of you like to pose a question for Mr. Lobianco?
Sure. Thank you very much for, for doing this. I've read your resume and, you know, you're of the three, both, all the three candidates are very qualified. So I appreciate you looking at this as a career move, as you say. So obviously growing up in the town, very important. In terms of what you're, you do not have expectations for community policing, what, what do you see yourself doing, if anything, as part of community policing in Hingham?
Well, Hingham, to me, I, as I grew up in this town, I feel that this, through research and through dealing with police officers as growing up, I've, I've realized that that's a big part of Hingham Police Department, is the community policing. So if I was to be a police officer here, I would do everything I could to engage with the community. That's having a positive attitude every day that you show up at work, dealing with every individual as respectfully as you can and being as transparent as possible through every process of the policing, whether it's writing somebody a ticket or telling them how to go about the process of appealing the ticket, just, just being as nice and as transparent as possible. That's how I feel that community policing would be a part of my policing career as a police officer.
Mary?
Thank you. Thank you very much for coming forward. So I tend to ask the same question to everybody, so I have two for you. When you think about kind of your education and, and your work experience, are there one or two things that you think kind of stand out that would help you to be an effective police officer in the town of Hingham?
The two things that I believe are my standing out characters for education and experience, my education, I always had good grades in school. I think that this is because policing is what I love to do. I've been, ever since I started my education, I've taken classes in criminal justice and I've done everything that I could. And I was fortunate enough to have teachers that were ex-law enforcement and very, very in tune with what law enforcement stands for and what the values are. So I say that my education was key in the, because of my grades, because I just had a natural understanding for police work and the actual textbook portion of it. And then as far as work goes, customer service is what I've done ever since I was able to get a work permit at the town of Hingham. So I've been in customer service, dealing with people ever since I was 16 years old, I believe, is when I started working. So customer service and my grades, I feel that are the best attributes.
Thank you. And final question, three adjectives that describe you, what would they be?
Caring, trustworthy, and motivated would be the three.
Thank you very much.
I noticed you wear your hair short. How long have you had a short haircut?
Always. I've always worn my hair short on the sides and spiked it up in the front ever since I was in high school.
What kind of partner would you want to be riding with?
To be honest with you, I would love to be riding with my brother as a partner. To be honest with you, I would love to be riding with my brother as a partner. We weren't as close in high school, but where as close can be now, we're both support system for each other. The type of partner that I want would be the one that would have my back. I know that he has my back a hundred percent and I would hope that a future officer has my back a hundred percent, no matter what the circumstance is.
Would you, would you say that you're, you're an individual who is open to direction?
I do believe that I'm open to direction. I can give leadership as well as take direction well. Currently, the job that I work in, I'm a warranty administrator for Cork Auto Dealers, so I handle ROs. I basically get the dealer paid on repair orders that he has existing. So I have to take direction every single day, whether it's from a service advisor, the second in charge of the company. And I take that direction and I do my best to get the job done a hundred percent of the time. I feel that that's because I'm a good listener and I'm a good communicator.
Are you engaged in problem resolution in that capacity?
I am fortunate that I am. I have to deal with the service writers and the technicians hand-in-hand. So we come into issues every now and again as far as the paperwork goes. I got to make sure a signature is in the right spot on the piece of paper, I got to make sure a date's in the right spot. So there is conflict here and there, but at the end of the day, we have an understanding that it is my job to make sure that Mr. Cork gets paid for his, his portion of the ROs and if that doesn't happen, then I'm not doing my job right. So we may have conflict every now and again, but we have an understanding that it's a team effort to get the job done.
Where do you see yourself in ten years as a PO in this town?
Ten years, I see myself as a police officer in this town, have a family that'll go through the same educational system that I went through and hopefully be as successful as me, maybe look up to me as a role model as I look up to my father. He's, I think that if I was half as successful as he was in life, I think that I would be somewhere. And I would hope that I could be defined as a police officer in this town.
Thank you, Mr. Lobianco.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Is there anything you'd like to ask us before you depart?
I was going to ask you if you wanted my resume, but I happened to notice that you do have it. I just want to say thank you for taking the time. I'm very humbled that the town that I grew up watching police officers patrol the area, I have that opportunity to be one of the candidates, so thank you all for taking the time.
You're welcome, sir.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too.
Ashley.
Yes, yes.
How you doing?
Good.
Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you very much.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome and thank you for stepping forward to be considered. As you know, we're interviewing three individuals, including yourself, for the position of patrolman in the Town of Hingham Police Department. The format is fairly straightforward, give you the opportunity to tell us and the residents of this town something about yourself. And then we, the three of us individually, will pose a few questions to you. And if there are any questions that you wish to ask of us at the end of our conversation with you, we'll give you that opportunity as well. Okay?
Thank you.
Floor is yours.
I've always admired and appreciated those who've put themselves on the line to protect our community and others. Having lived in Hingham my entire life and having a family business here in town, I decided to pursue my own career goals. After completing high school in two thousand and six, graduating from Hingham High, I went on to study criminal justice at Roger Williams University in Rhode Island, graduating in two thousand and ten with my bachelor's degree. I feel as though I am a very well-rounded and energetic individual, team player. I thrive in a fast-paced environment. I communicate well with my peers and I want to be a figure in this community, respected figure in this community. I want to be there to be able to provide resources and help those in need, give them assistance. I feel as though the career in law enforcement carries challenges, which allows you to use your critical thinking skills and problem-solving abilities.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thanks.
Mary?
Sure. Thank you very much and thank you for coming in tonight. As I'm, as I'm listening to you and things, I'm realizing it's, it's difficult and a little unusual to have a job interview in a public setting like this with the cameras. And I appreciate all the candidates who are willing to do that. I have two questions. The first one is, as you think about your education and your experience, what, what aspects of your background do you think qualify you to be a police officer in the Town of Hingham?
Well, obviously, studying four years of criminal justice at Roger Williams allowed me to become, what am I looking for? Allowed me to like broaden my ideas and see the criminal justice side from that aspect. But then also, working in my current role as an administrative position at the department, I've been able to see different aspects of the department and see how it works, the agency works as a whole. And also, I work as a matron, part-time and on an on-call basis, and I'm always readily available. So I've been able to see different types of personalities and handle different types of situations.
Is there anything in that experience that you've had working in the police department that has kind of surprised you in any way?
Every day is definitely different, but I just take it as it comes and work through it and...
Thank, yeah.
Yeah, thanks.
And my last question is, if I were to ask you three adjectives that you think describe you, what would they be?
Competent, loyal, and honest.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much for coming and putting yourself out like this. Obviously, I've made the comment to the previous applicant that I'm very impressed with all three of you in terms of what you've been able to accomplish. In terms of community policing in Hingham, do you see, what do you see your role or type of programs would you like to be involved with?
Well, definitely, community policing in town is a good aspect to have as a police officer is to show yourself with integrity and to stay community committed, but to be involved with any of the outside departments or boards or any of the involvement that they already have, such as like the Substance Abuse Coalition or, obviously, you know, the Citizens Police Academy is very involved with the community.
Just the other night for a presentation was impressive. One other question, is there something in terms of your life experiences, and I apologize if I'm asking maybe just a little different than someone else's question, your life experiences that you think that'll prepare you for the job that you're doing, you hope to be doing?
Well, I feel as though working here has definitely broadened, again, as I mentioned before, my views and aspects of the whole department as a whole. I've gone to see it work from the chain of commands all the way down to the street level and just seeing different aspects of the working parts.
Thank you.
Ms. Thomas, with respect to your work as a matron, can you tell us, please, what that involved and how much time you spent doing that?
I believe I've been doing it since two thousand and fourteen, so roughly about three years, four years.
And what does that involve? Kind of, what kind of work is that?
So when the department has an arrest, I come on and, come in on an on-call basis and work with the officer in charge or the booking officer throughout the booking process to typically, when a female is under arrest and there's no female officer available, to go through that entire booking process and deal with that individual and stay with them and watch them for their safety until they're released.
And what, what's your impression of that, that kind of work?
It's gratifying.
How? How so?
Just being able to be there for, sometimes some of these people are dealing with mental health issues or there for, some are juveniles, learning to, they're not learning, but they're learning from their mistakes and realizing that where they are, they can become a better person and just talking to them and being able to give them different avenues and how they can get help.
On a scale of one to ten, with ten being the most, how, what would you characterize your level of participation with respect to the arrest of a female during the booking process?
Probably a ten.
With respect to the work you've done as a records clerk administrator, what insights have you gained from, from that work within the department?
Well, not only, I, well, I feel as if not only am I the records clerk administrator, but I definitely work hand-in-hand with the deputy chief and the chief and any task that they give me, I'm always available to them to complete it in a timely manner.
And without disclosing any of the work that you do, can you provide us, please, with an impression of that work?
It definitely, you, I guess, a patrolman wouldn't underst, well, I shouldn't say they wouldn't understand, but they definitely don't, I don't believe that they see how much work goes into behind the scenes and what the chief and the deputy and the administrative side actually does for the department as a whole.
Where would you see yourself in ten years as a Hingham police officer, ma'am?
Well, I would, first off, I would want to start with short-term goals and move on to long-term goals, but I would be the best that I can be in my career and...
What would your long-term goal be?
Being the best that I can be in my career and just taking steps in order to make myself a better police officer.
Are there any questions that you have of us?
I don't. Just want to thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank the town for the opportunity.
Thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
You too.
Jay, hello, welcome.
How you doing, buddy?
Good.
Mr. Galanouskas, thank you so much for coming in.
As I told your fellow applicants prior to your arrival, this is an interview for the position of patrolman on the Hingham Police Department. We, pretty informal, even though we're all dressed in suits and the like. We're going to give you an opportunity to tell us something about yourself, at which point in time, my colleagues and myself may ask you a few questions. And then we'll give you the opportunity, should you wish to take it, to ask us any questions. And then we'll conclude. So with that, the floor is yours. Please fill us in a little bit about yourself.
Thank you again for having me here for this opportunity. I know I've been here before, just to reiterate a little bit about myself. Twenty-four years old, I grew up in Hingham my entire life, Hingham resident. I graduated through the Hingham Public Schools. I was a high honor student the whole way through. In my senior year of high school, I completed a senior project where I graduated the Hingham Citizens Police Academy and I completed a documentary for the Hingham Police Department. That really is what started my goals and aspirations to become a police officer. I got to see the inside of the police department, what it was about, and it was something that I was interested in. I ended up going to Bridgewater State University following high school for a criminal justice degree. My senior year in college as well, I completed a six-hundred-and-thirty-hour internship with the Hingham Police Department that reinforced all my goals, my degree and everything that I was going for, that this was the path I wanted to go down, that I wanted to be a police officer. I got a lot of experience with ride-alongs, just the computer systems, the CGIS, information systems, licensing, firearms license to carry. I did arrest warrants, got a just good well-knowledge of everything in the department, how it operates. I got to meet all of the staff. So from there on, I graduated the Reserve Police Academy, which I graduated back, back in March twenty-fifteen, I believe. So I'm a certified Reserve Police Officer. Since then, I've been looking to acquire any kind of experience I can. I've been applying to positions to get my foot in the door, start my career off, and it's led me back right here to Hingham where I started, where I grew up. And this is really the town that I want to work for. It's, I grew up here, I know this town, I know the area. This is just, it's a part of me, it's a part of my childhood, this is what I know. So this is where I want to at least start my career, be great here. If I can make a full career of it, that'd be the ideal situation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for coming. I know you were here before, I did remember. And I've told everybody and I'll repeat it though, even though I, I've seen your resume before, very impressed with all three of you in terms of how you present yourselves and your educational background, the experiences, it's very impressive. So I have a couple of questions for you. In terms of community policing, what do you see your role as a police officer and maybe if you have any particular programs you might be interested in working in as well, what do you see as your role?
Community policing is huge in any police department. I, that's one of my priorities as an officer. I would say that's one of the most gratifying things that they can, officer can obtain is just being, becoming the connection with the community, just all the people that you're working for and are interacting with on a daily basis. Like you need those people to trust you in your own job. They're hiring you, they're paying you to do this service for them. You have to maintain a strong relationship with that community. For me, I'd go right back probably to the Citizens Police Academy. That's where it started for me, that's where I got my first aspirations. It's an easy task to do, to go and train the next class, give a presentation on when, you know, going through the academy, I'd be the youngest recruit on the force, I'd be the perfect candidate to teach the class on what the academy's like, how going through this process, how would I get to get here, why I'm in front of this class now. And I think that'd be a perfect site for me, right there, is the Citizens Police Academy.
Kind of touching on the Police Academy, of course, I've never been through the academy and so when you say the Reserve Police Academy, is that, is that a standard type of academy that everyone would have to go through before they become an active police officer?
Yes, it's, it's run by the MPTC, the Mass, by Massachusetts. So it certifies you to be a reserve officer, part-time. It's a, it was a three-hundred-and-thirty-hour course, so I'd be, I'm certified to do part-time police work, I can be a special officer in a town, some non-civil service towns or campus polices, they hire based off of some of those academy standards. It's somewhat different from the full-time academy, the full-time is six-hundred hours, it's a bit longer and more in-depth, but I still, you still are granted some of the similar police powers, the same training, you have all the equipment and the classes and whatnot.
So in, in terms of that, is there a regimen that you have to kind of pass or go through to be able to graduate?
Yes, there's standardized, it was six months, there's standardized tests put on by the state that you have to pass, that you have to meet a certain cutoff, like you can't, you can't just take a class and pass. You have to pass the test, you have to go through the classes themselves. We have certified instructors from all over the state that we do the training with.
And just be one other question on that point, is if you don't pass these tests along the way, do you then stop attending or you, you have to leave or how does that work?
Yes, there's a certain, if, I believe it's if you fail more than two tests, you're immediately discharged from the academy. There's other disqualifying points, you could, I mean, councilment subordination, if you're not following the rules, if you're not properly presentable, you're going to have to be a clean-shaved, clean-look, in uniform with your equipment, properly suited, shoes are shined. If you don't meet those and you're just being a troublemaker the whole time, you're, you're not going to make it, you'll be out.
And I'll just tell you, the reason why I asked you that question is I know that from the past experience, I think you're the only one of the three that actually completed that type of training. And in my mind, I was thinking that there was a regimen that you've been kind of already tested, so to speak, along the way, and I'm happy to hear that you passed and obviously that you took it upon yourself to go to that academy. Any other questions?
Thank you for coming forward. I have two questions and I've asked everybody the same questions. When you think about, you know, not only your education but also your work experience, what, what aspects of your education and experience do you think stand out to qualify you?
There's other disqualifying points, you could, I mean, councilment subordination, if you're not following the rules, if you're not properly presentable, you're going to have to be a clean shave, clean look, in uniform with your equipment, properly suited, shoes are shined. If you don't meet those and you're just being a troublemaker the whole time, you're not going to make it, you'll be out.
And I'll just tell you, the reason why I asked you that question is I know that from the past experience, I think you're the only one of the three that actually completed that type of training, and in my mind, I was thinking that there was a regimen that you've been kind of already tested, so to speak, along the way, and I'm happy to hear that you passed and obviously that you took it upon yourself to go to that academy. Any other questions?
Thank you for coming forward. I have two questions, and I've asked everybody the same questions. When you think about, you know, not only your education, but also your work experience, what aspects of your education and experience do you think stand out to qualify you for, you know, becoming a police officer in the town of Hingham?
Well, I mean, education and work has been my entire life, that's my whole life experience. I began working when I was just a kid, I was four years old, I was working for my father, he's a Boston Harbor commercial lobsterman. So every summer, summer schools, weekends, you know, I was on vacation, I would be with my father, working with my brothers. So I grew up as just a kid, working on a boat, doing whatever I can to help out, you know, and eventually you pick up more and more as you go. So I've been working, you know, since I was a kid, I've been hardening my principles of, you know, just strong work ethic, doing the right job, you know, a job worth doing is a job worth doing right. That's how I was raised, and you do it right the first time, you don't go back the second time. I don't cut corners, I'm not there to skip it and just do the minimal, I always try to make it like the best presentable work I can do. Education, like I said, I went through Hingham Schools, high honors, I graduated summa cum laude from Bridgewater, and it just all ties in, you know, my whole life, growing up with good work ethic, that you know what you have to do to be presented. I come here before the board now, and this is what you, everyone looks at to view me as my whole life. How did I get to this point? You know, I've, you know, pushed myself every step of the way to be the best that I can be. I graduated summa cum laude, I graduated at the top of my academy, I always try to be the best that I can be. I put that through my life, that's just what I carry on forward, you just keep improving and you only do better every time. There's always room for improvement, in my opinion, everyone, some of my critiques that people tell me is I'm the perfectionist, but that's, I mean, it's just me, it's always trying to do it right the first time. I want it to be the best so that everyone else looks at me and says, like, that's why he's better than everyone else, right there. He will go the extra mile to do it perfect the first time.
Thank you, and my final question, if you could describe yourself with three adjectives, what would those three be?
Three adjectives, I'd definitely say ambitious, loyal, and empathetic.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Galanouskas, thank you so much for coming in. We've talked before.
Yes.
And tell us about your experience on the fishing boat, would you please?
Yeah.
I'd like to get a better sense as to that experience.
As I said before, I started when I was a kid. I'm actually doing that right now, that is my full-time job as of now. We go out, we start five in the morning, 5:30, just before the sun comes up. It's 42-foot PEI lobster boat, it's a commercial, so we have a license to 800 traps. And just me and the captain, I'm not working with my father right now, my brother is actually with him, I'm working with another individual at the same co-op, but it's just me and the captain, we'll both go out, usually longer days, probably 10, 12-hour days, and we'll haul 400 traps. It's just me and him, working the line, you get the hydraulics, it's a lot of high tension. We have 25 pots to each trawl, so we pull up the string, empty the bait out, the old bait, put new bait in, you're taking lobsters out, banding, gauging, counting the lobsters as you go, it's always just constantly busy, it's just like a well-oiled machine, you just keep going, you keep going, it's multitasking, it's communicating with the captain, I mean, he's responsible for the boat in itself, he's driving it, he's commanding the hydraulics, but then essentially everything else is on me, like, I'm making sure that, you know, the ropes aren't in a hazardous position, that they're tucked away properly, that they're not going to hook something, a mat, a tub, that me, myself, or the captain aren't going to get sucked out into the water. We get a lot of knives, there's high tension, cutting ropes, holding a lot of weight, there's plenty of opportunity and hazards to ever be, it's just a dangerous operation in itself, but, I mean, I've grown up doing it my whole life, it becomes like a second nature, but it's definitely some very hard physical work, I mean, that's...
Have you worked in foul weather conditions?
Sorry, what was I saying?
Have you worked in foul weather conditions?
I have, especially this year, I'll never forget that. Coming for this fall, the weather gets a lot worse, it's windier, it's colder, and you can only miss so many days of fishing, every day you don't go is a day you're not getting paid, you're not making money if you don't go out. Sometimes you just kind of, you almost take a risk if it's really windy, but it's going to be windy all week, you're going to have to go out there and do it. And we went out there and we had, I believe when we came back in, we found out it was 30 mile an hour winds, and we were hitting waves, six-foot waves, and, yeah, I was a little seasick that day, but I mean, I was going up and down, and that becomes a new job in itself, you're trying to stay on the boat, the captains can only keep the boat straight, and you're rocking and rolling like a roller coaster, trying to perform your job at the same time, while trying to prevent, you know, being seasick and whatnot. So the captain's got his own worries, you've got yours, and it's just the two of us, can't go over, that's not an option, so I mean, that's, it becomes a whole nother game in itself, but that was definitely a rough one this year.
Where would you see yourself in 10 years on the Hingham Police Department, Mr. Galanouskas?
10 years? I mean, I, again, like I said, my goals through life is always just pushing as far as I can go, I don't settle for like second, I want to be the top, the best candidate that I can be. I would go right through the ranks as best I can, move up, sergeant, lieutenant. An ultimate goal that I would like to do is become a detective, I mean, I know that's a challenging task, going through those ranks, there's a lot of people in line that want to do that position as well, but that's my ultimate goal. If I have my mindset on that, that's what I'm looking to do, I'm going to go, I'll get that, however long it takes, but I'll keep going.
All right, well, thank you very much. Do you have any questions of us, sir?
Not at this time.
Okay, well, thank you for coming in.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you again.
Yeah.
Good evening.
Evening, Chief.
The selection process for the new police officer, I think, is one of the most difficult tasks a police chief faces. Over the past 20 years, the Hingham Police Department has worked to constantly refine our candidate recruiting process. This effort can clearly be seen by the caliber and the quality and the eligible candidates and the great officers and civilians that currently serve the Hingham Police Department. Our current selection process we are using is based on a nationally-recognized interviewing process. The system is designed to provide us with professional and unbiased interview processes to select the best candidate for the job. Eleven seasoned officers were involved in the selection process, which included one officer from Cohasset and one officer from Situate. We were presented with three great candidates, all with college degrees in criminal justice, and it was our job to pick the most qualified individual for this job. Unfortunately, we can only take one candidate. I would urge the other two candidates to continue their efforts in pursuing their goals in law enforcement. As a chief of police, I am proud to recommend candidate Brian Lobianco for a conditional offer of employment with the Hingham Police Department. I'm going to read the summation of Sergeant Matt Lucas, who oversaw the selection process. I am in complete agreement with the board's finding, and I don't think I could have stated this any better. Mr. Lobianco approached the interview panel with confidence in well-thought-out answers. Mr. Lobianco scored a 5.0 or better in five out of six factors, clearly outperforming the other two candidates. Mr. Lobianco, without question, was the unanimous top choice among the interview panel. Mr. Lobianco has a degree in criminal justice from the Bridgewater State University. It was apparent that Mr. Lobianco has a strong desire to become a police officer for the town of Hingham, and his answers to the panel's questions reflected the time and energy invested in familiarizing himself with the town and the Hingham Police Department. Mr. Lobianco appreciates the responsibility that comes with becoming a police officer and grasps the ideals of community policing and the importance of integrity, which the Hingham Police Department holds with such high regard. Mr. Lobianco does not view this position as a job, but as a career, and portrays his desire to continue the legacy of the Hingham Police Department as one of the leading law enforcement agencies in the region. Through his answers and work experience, he demonstrated an ability to lead, but also to take direction. Mr. Lobianco takes pride in his work, which was demonstrated through his advancements at his current employer and the responsibilities bestowed upon him. Mr. Lobianco understands that his actions and accomplishments not only reflect upon himself, but the organization as a whole. Mr. Lobianco was the only candidate to ask pointed questions at the interview panel when given the chance, and seemed to be genuinely appreciated of being given the opportunity to appear before the panel. Mr. Lobianco scored exceedingly well with all the members of the interview panel and was clearly the top candidate for every panel member. Thank you.
My colleagues, have any questions of the chief before we begin?
I have a couple.
I was just going to, for purposes of public, I just want to mention the process that you go through, because I don't think until I had the privilege of sitting at this desk that I understood, I'm not going to read it all, but there is an intake process where candidates meet with three assigned background investigators and review the application process, they're given information about how the process works. The second phase is background checks, the third is an interview process conducted by five police officers, four of which are from Hingham. I like the idea of having a non-Hingham police officer participating in the panel, and think that that's a good idea to keep going. The panel is not aware of the results from the first two phases of this. The interviews are supervised, they are observed by the chief of police, the deputy and a deputy detective sergeant to ensure fairness and impartiality, and at the conclusion of that, the five panel members meet in private to rank the candidates, and then a final review of the process by the appointing panel where information is discussed. So all that has occurred before the candidates have come here.
Correct.
This is a, this to me is, as an HR practitioner, is a very thorough, very comprehensive process, and again, I was unaware of this process and think it's helpful for the public to understand what we, the process that we use for hiring police officers.
Thank you. Chief, thank you, and I obviously didn't get to interview to the extent that the officers did, the three candidates, but I will say that, as always, I'm very impressed with all three of them. It's a great thing to have such qualified people, but it also, it causes me a little bit of a headache to try to be able to make my recommendation, because I'm weighing what you have to say, what the police officers have to say, what I'm reading and what I get from the candidates themselves, and sometimes, as in this is the case, where I see a couple of them being very close, the one you recommended and Mr. Galanouskas, and, you know, I guess I have a question for you, and I think it happened the last time, would this involve a bypass to go with this candidate?
In civil service, when we require to fill out forms, civil service, we're required to state why the officers receive, whoever gets the appointment, we're required to inform them, civil service, of the reasons we picked them. The officers that we don't, we also would state, in the eventuality of any type of an appeal process, we would also state the reasons why we did not hire them. If we don't do it that way, if there was to be an appeal, if we don't state the reasons and the process and the system we use, when we go to defend our decision, we would not be allowed to enter that into the civil service hearing. So it's very important that we follow a process, and by following the California standard post-exam that we do, the police officer standard testing exam, it's a scientifically-designed exam, there's a series of different, up to, this interview process takes approximately about an hour, it's very lengthy, they're tested in the different areas of experience, problem-solving, communication skills, interest motivations, interpersonal skills, and community involvement. Each of those are receiving five or six questions during that process. They're also rated and scored as they go through the background checks. The intake, one of the things is that it's important about the intake is that we want officers that know how to respond, that can follow directions, do as they're told, do things on a timely manner, and be polite and friendly, be respectful, and complete these tasks as asked and performed. So during the background check, they're reviewed again, and they go through different interviews with the family members and people that are on their resume, background checks, employers. We also follow up with making sure that the information is consistent and follow up with any other types of things that the background check may bring up. And as I said, as we go through those processes, we totally isolate those from the people that are on the board, because we feel that we don't want to taint the interview. The only people during the background check and the interview process, they respond to myself, the deputy chief, in this case, it was Sergeant O'Shea, we don't know that until after the interviews are done. During the interview process, there was five panels, one of the things we did add this year was the involvement of other officers, so there was a five-member panel, Lieutenant Corey Farina, Lieutenant Richard Cochrane, Lieutenant Dave Petiti, Sergeant Matt Lucas, and Sergeant Allison Steverman from the Situate Police Department took place on that board. On the interviewing office, on the background investigators, we also used an officer from Cohasset, a sergeant from, can't remember his name, Sergeant McLean? McLean, Detective McLean from Cohasset, as well as that two officers. So the result is they're trying to isolate these, and then at the end, we grade how they not only do on the test, but how they responded to all the tasks that they were performed. Did they return materials in a timely manner? Did they follow the instructions? The deputy has given them a series of instructions that tell them what to do, who to respond to, and where to turn papers into, and who was their actual contact point. So if they contact somebody else and don't follow the directions that were clearly given by the deputy, that's not something that we consider what we want. So all these factors are factored into it when we make that decision.
And I didn't want to interrupt you, and I maybe wasn't clear in my question, I'm just asking, does your recommendation involve a bypass?
So how do they, how do these candidates rank on the...
Oh, the civil service testing would be Jake Galanouskas, Ashley Thomas, and Brian Lobianco.
Well, last time we were here, and you know much, and I apologize if I'm not asking a credit, because you've done this a lot more than I have, but I'm learning as we've gone through some of the interviews. The last time we were here, there was a candidate that was recommended, and it was a bypass because the score was lower than the person that didn't get picked.
Correct.
And I understood by reading the material that that was the case in this situation as well.
Yes, it would be.
So Mr. Galanouskas would have been the high scorer, but for other reasons.
Yes, Mr. Galanouskas, Ashley Thomas, and Jake, Brian Lobianco.
Right, and so that was really my question.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Sorry, no, I'm sorry. But is that something that your experience has done more often than not, or is it a rare occurrence that we bypass? I don't know, because I'm like...
I think one of the things that we are doing, we're establishing a system, we're trying to refine that system as best as possible, and I think we're allowed to choose from the top three candidates. And like I said, this is often a difficult decision, I shouldn't say often, it always is, because one person's happy and two people are just very disappointed. I've been in this position before, and I understand this, and I was on the other end in my life as well, so I think one of the things that we're adding this year is that we explain to the candidates that anyone that did not get the job, the deputy chief and I will be meeting with them next week, and we will bring them in and tell them where we feel they need to improve and what they can do in the future to better, but what we're finding now is that departments are generally trying to move out of civil service because of the inability to pick qualified candidates, because we're restricted on how they do. So working within the system right now, we're doing the best we can, and we think that the formula and the situation that these officers are tasked with, my leading, you know, these are all seasoned candidates, seasoned officers on the department with many years of experience, and with the checks and balances, I think what we're trying to do is follow the recommendations that my command staff is making, and I think as a chief, I'm really in, and I've found that I've been in agreement with the process. And one of the things we did is we did go back and check with the scores from before and how everything matched out, and things seem to be consistent with what we've done in the past.
Did you essentially do an assessment center here, your version of one?
As close as we could without the actual...
And so assessment centers are really becoming... And so assessment centers are, are really becoming, I would say, more and more the norm on how to hire civil service, specifically police and fire. Because I think communities are starting to find now, 60 years after civil service or 80 years after civil service, that sometimes it just doesn't fit right, a simple test. And the, the work that you can see in the lists of the background checks and the works of half a dozen of Glenn's officers, to, to get to that point tries to create a more holistic view of whether that candidate will be successful for us.
Just a follow-up. Thanks. I don't know any of these candidates. I know Mr. Galanouskas was here the last time.
Yes.
And, and probably the only time, and I could be wrong, where I didn't agree with the recommendation because I didn't see the individual who was recommended didn't have this breadth of experience, academy and so forth, that Mr. Galanouskas did.
Yes.
And it turned out that we lost that candidate at some point, and that's why we're back here again.
Correct.
This time. So, so I'm just trying to make sure, and it's very difficult for me to, to try to make, you know, my, my opinion here reflect not only taking into consideration everything you guys do, because I agree, you know, obviously you guys do a great job with it, but I, I am torn, and I, if I just will say this, that what impressed me about Mr. Galanouskas, because Mr. Lobianco is, is definitely worthy of being an officer, so I don't have any qualm with that at all, is that knowing what would happen the last time about, and that was the normal academy, that he had already completed an academy where, you know, for lack of a better word, they weed out people that, that aren't necessarily the caliber where you want to be, you're a police officer. He's passed that. He said he was top of the class. No one else had done that. One of the things that he said, that, you know, that I've heard from many of our candidates, but not all of them, that become police officers in Hingham, is the ambition to be, to go above and beyond where they are in terms of what they want to do. I wasn't expecting that, because the other two didn't mention it, but I don't think they had to. But my, my problem is you've got somebody who, they're all free from the town, they all three represent themselves very well, they're all qualified, and they wouldn't be in front of us. And, and so my, my sense of it is, is that my decision, you know, and I'm only one to, it may not, it always matters, but it may not make much of a difference, is, is that I have a hard time getting around, you know, I know this young man, and I, I feel for them all. I think that's part of it. I feel for them all because they're all hoping to make a career out of such a wonderful, you know, position as a police officer, and hopefully go on and do great things for this town like many people have in the past. And he's come back again, like you, 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 and I, you know, I personally felt that he was a better qualified candidate the last time. He's back again. I, I couldn't ask him to do anything more in terms of his experience, his education. And I, I did ask him a couple of questions based on what I saw in the critique to see what, you know, whether I would get a different feel. And I, I thought they were all pretty compatible. You know, when a community policing questions that I asked, I asked it for a reason, and they all answered pretty similarly. They all were very well-versed and so forth. I didn't see any deficiencies in any of them. So I guess, I guess I'm just, I'm just saying I'm thanking you guys for what you're doing, and, and please, you know, I, just bear with me when I, when, it's not that I don't agree with, with your assessment, because I think that, that gentleman, I think they all are, but the two that I'm struggling with is the one that you chose, and Mr. Galanouskas. And I think on paper, and what I've seen, you guys have your own opportunities to do your assessment, I, I think he is very worthy of this, this position as well. So I am torn between those two. And, you know, and I'll wait to hear from my colleagues about it, but I, I hate to be in a position where I have to say no to any of them. That happens every time, I think. But in this case, I've got somebody coming back again who's very qualified and has come back and made a great presentation tonight. It's, it's difficult.
Mary.
Um, thank you. I, you know, I, I, I agree with a lot of what you said, which is that we have three very qualified candidates, and all of them grown up in Hingham, all of them have criminal justice degrees, all of them have an interest in a career in law enforcement in their community. And I happen to think that, that, that while every police officer we hire is terrific, I think there's something a little special when you can get somebody who's grown up in the town. I think they have a good, they have a good pulse of the community. You know, like you, Paul, it's, it's, it's hard to sort of weigh these different factors. And I guess the way I went into this one, even though we had someone who we had seen before, I kind of looked at it with a fresh set of eyes. And as, as somebody who, you know, in, in my, in my professional life, I do a lot of things with assessment and, you know, I, I set up selection systems and hiring systems and performance management systems. And when I see this post, the police officer standards and training, this is a, to the process side of me, what I like about this process is it touches on different competencies and behaviors. So it's looking at your skills, your experience, and your behaviors in important areas. So, you know, problem solving, because what are you going to do? You know, when, when something comes up, the officer has to, has to be able to react. And sometimes it's a situation that they've never been in before. That requires some skills. Communication skills because of all the interaction, interest motivation, interpersonal, community involvement, those I think shed some light on your ability to not only interact with the people that you serve, but, but the people that you work with. And so I guess as I'm looking at it as well, and I see this instrument, it, it has a lot of rigor to me. And, and I see one candidate who, through the, through this panel of six, six people, was kind of head and shoulders above the other two candidates. And the other two candidates had fine scores, but I, I noticed the difference between Mr. Lobianco and the other candidates. And, and that, you know, that, that's, you know, we're all paying attention to different things. That's the thing that I pay very much attention to. Chief, I really like the idea of meeting with whoever is not selected tonight. I think we've, this is this, is this our, we've hired three officers? We've, we've, we've had, I mean, I think, you know, we, we have a fluid workforce, and so it would, it would be my hope that whoever we don't select at this point, that some feedback to that candidate to help, to help each of these candidates better position themselves for future consideration is terrific. But kind of getting back to the matter at hand, as I look at this very good instrument that I think covers a lot of dimensions, I see that Mr. Lobianco's rating in this was considerably higher than, than his peers, which is, you know, kind of what's driving my decision tonight.
I have to reach back to my own experience as a Hingham police officer. I was a policeman in this town at 21 years of age. I took the sergeant's exam at 25 and promptly saw myself get passed over about three times before I, I made rank. And at the time, I felt that that was an injustice. But now that I sit in this seat, my perspective is, is been, it's, it's been shaped by the experience I've had, both as a selectman and as a policeman. I think the hiring process that the department engages in today is, is a significant improvement over what it once was. Yes, I am not a fan of passing people with higher scores over, but I think that the score is only part of the story. And what the chief has done and the deputy has, they've, they've formed a team, they're using generally accepted methods of fleshing out the kind of qualities that a successful police officer in this town is going to need. I don't know any one of these individuals personally. Yes, I do remember Mr. Galanouskas from the last interview. And I think that this decision is an extremely difficult one. But I also know the individuals that conducted the background screening, and I have great confidence in their abilities. And I think the department's ability to self-examine itself, as well as the candidates who want to become a part of it, is, is something that we have to respect and, and support. You know, the, the brief, limited time that the three of us have to, to, to make a threshold assessment over what I firmly believe is perhaps the most important decision I make on this board, we are hiring people that will have the legal right to kill others. We, we really have to get this right. We, you know, if, if there's any maturity question, truthfulness issue of any kind, we have to resolve it in, in what I believe is the best interests of the town. I believe the department has done that in this instance. I, I would like to say that we have the ability to provide every one of those candidates with a position, but we don't. So we're under, I think, a moral obligation to pick the best one. And we rely on the chief, the deputy, the detectives, the LTs that have done this, this vetting process. They're the ones that are going to be working with this person. So in addition to the standardized testing that's done, I'm also looking to their gut. And I think that they have spoken, and it's, it's unequivocal. And that, that guides the direction I believe it's appropriate for us to take as a board, notwithstanding, you know, my, my sympathy for the, the top scorer. You know, I topped the sergeant's exam, I got passed over. I topped the lieutenant's exam, I got passed over. I took the chief's exam, and the selectmen changed the way it was weighted, but I got the high mark. But the guy who got the chief's position was by far and away better qualified.
I doubt that.
No, he was. He was. I just wasn't, I was too young. But, you know, it's late. I think I've made my point. I don't know whether additional time would add to the, to the decision. I know that the department's under pressure, try and keep their ranks filled, firmly support a full-strength police department, for all kinds of reasons I don't need to go into. But it's my understanding that in order to get into the next class, we have to make a decision tonight. So I'm really not inclined to put this off. I'll entertain a motion that we vote to extend an offer of employment to Brian Lobianco as a permanent police officer for the town of Hingham. The offer is continued upon the successful passing of all required medical and psychological screening examinations and all other requirements related to, but not necessarily limited to the following. A, successful passing of the required medical examination. B, successful passing of the required physical abilities test. C, successful passing of the required psychological screening process. D, successful passing of all other requirement for entrance into the police academy. E, entering into a sex, satisfactory agreement with the town of Hingham relative to payment of up to $3,000 recruit training fee. F, successful completion of the police academy as determined by the police chief. G, any and all other requirements as mandated by law or regulation. Should the candidate fail to successfully complete all of these conditions as determined in the sole discretion of the town, then this conditional appointment shall be considered null and void, and to the extent necessary, any offer of employment shall be considered rescinded. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. Mr. Lobianco, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Thank you, deputy.
Thank you, chief. Thank you, deputy.
At this time, we are now going to discuss the lease agreement with Hingham Maritime Center. As I have stated publicly on numerous prior occasions, my daughter, Rosamund Conroy, is the executive director of Hingham Maritime Center, so I'll be recusing myself from this discussion.
You got the helm?
Yeah. Why not? So Susan, you, you're going to join us? You're going to join us?
You want me to?
I do. I think this is a preliminary matter. Tom, is it, is you, you're prepared to take us through it?
Sure.
Just, we're, we're back through a lengthy process of discussion, and Mary and I have been meeting, obviously with Susan and Tom, and there's been some negotiations going on. I think we're just, we're trying to get this public process going so that people can get a, a sense of where we are. And I think, I see Margaret here, and we shared some ideas with her as well, and Tom, if you could take over.
Sure. So bear with me, I, I'm on well into hour 13 in this building today, so I'm going to read some comments so that I don't miss, miss anything. And this is a complicated matter, and I don't want to, I don't want to leave anything out. So I'm, bear with me reading through some of this. I would state, though, that these remarks will be, or this lease is, it's, what I'm about to read is on behalf of the board of selectmen. You guys have worked diligently throughout this process, which I thank you very much for. The guidance was, was appreciated. And that, as a result, we have, we have, I think, a pretty strong document to present to the town for the use of that, of that, of Barnes Wharf. Okay, so a little bit of background first. The original concept was to prepare a lease that, a lease, limited space on Barnes Wharf for a community rowing and sailing center in exchange for building float and dock improvements that would revert to the town ownership at the end of that lease. That was the core concept, as I understand it. And the process that we followed to get here was that an RFP was issued in 2013 by the town. We had one respondent, and it was subsequently awarded to Hingham Maritime Center, formerly Lincoln Maritime Center. In 2014, the annual town meeting authorized the board of selectmen to enter into a 30-year lease with Hingham Maritime Center, again formerly Lincoln Maritime Center. Since then, we've developed and negotiated the lease and memorandum of understanding while seeking throughout the process input from the Hingham High School and the Education Department, and specifically the athletic director in the form of Margaret Conity, and, and the harbor master, Hingham Harbor Master Ken Corson. Okay, so some highlights of the lease that we've, that we've put together. The lease defines the public access space. It contains milestones and dates for activities to be, to be completed by both the landlord, the town, and the tenant, Hingham Maritime Center. It specifies rent, which includes a cash rent of $100 per year and cost of improvements of $3.5 million. The lease also goes on to define the permitted uses. It requires annual meetings and statistical reports. It requires the repair and maintenance of both the wharf, as well as other facilities that would be located on the wharf. And it contains supporting documents, including a map to orient everyone and, and outline the public access and exclusive use areas, as well as a safety policy as drafted and, and followed through with by our harbor master. And then another component of the lease document is a memorandum of, memorandum of understanding that would be entered into, that governs the use of the wharf by different parties. And specifically, it, it identifies two scenarios. One is the use of the wharf by Hingham High School, and, and that entire document has been vetted through the school department, Dr. Gallo and, and Athletic Director Conity. And that, that would require, that, that would offer the use of, of Barnes Wharf by Hingham High School teams at no additional charge. And then that there would be additional third-party uses available, and that the MOU lays out how it would be determined who, when, how many events, et cetera, would be, would be allowed under that third-party use scenario. So the next steps. Next steps are, we're going to offer this in the morning, I'm not going to do it tonight on hour 14, to put on the website. We're going to make the lease and all of its pertinent documents available through the town's website to the public. We would ask that any public comment come in written form to the, to my attention at town hall in the form of, or excuse me, by December, I close the business on December 12th.
There'll be an area on the webpage for people to do that.
Thank you. The, with the intent is to ask the board of selectmen to consider, that gives us a little bit of time for the board of selectmen to, to compile the public comment and have the, have Mary and Paul a chance to review them, review that public comment, and then to hopefully make a decision and consider the lease and pertinent MOU on December 15th at your regular meeting, scheduled meeting for that night. And again, all documents will be posted tomorrow morning on the website. So that's my summary, and that's my presentation on what is involved in this lease. So, that's my summary, and that's my presentation on what is involved in this lease.
Susan, do you have anything to add?
No, I'd just say, from the beginning, there were comments that were made through the town meeting process, when the Warren article was authorized, about wanting to get the value to the town in the form of the improvements, making sure that there was public, maintaining the public access, excuse me, access. And those types of comments, and the initial draft went out, and it's been a long process. As you know, you've had a number of extensions. But that has been maintained consistently by the selectmen as we've gone through those principles that were kind of, that were enumerated by the public and advisory and other interested parties have been consistently followed through by the selectmen or reflected in the document.
Mary?
Yeah, and I would just, to build on what Susan said, because I was the chair of the advisory committee when this article was put forward, there were, in the advisory committee comment, there were a lot of things that were sort of memorialized, in terms of the town getting economic value, maintaining public access, and, you know, during this process, we've gone back to that comment to really sort of look at that to say, you know, do we address some things? I'm not going to go into it a ton of detail, but I would just say, so, first of all, the lease is 36 pages long. The memorandum of understanding is nine. We have a term chart that's two pages, a safety policy that's about 10 pages, and a map. And I say that to say that, that, that over really the past year, we've worked very, very hard to think about all the different constituents where Barnes Wharf matters. And, you know, first and foremost, that's the taxpayers of Hingham. It's the Hingham Maritime Center. One of our things, you know, the Hingham Maritime Center provides wonderful programs for the community, and we wanted to structure a lease that would allow that mission to continue. We also had our high school sports teams, and we knew through experience that the lease that's in place right now is very ambiguous when it comes to the relationship between these organizations. And so, what we worked very hard to do was to get very specific. I think when we first started talking to Susan about what needed to go into these documents, we were asking for some things that were a little bit unusual, but we thought were important. For example, let's have clarity on making sure that there's coordination of the schedule so that the docks can go in the water and the athletes can practice before their first regatta. And as crazy as that is in New England, the first regatta is the first week in April. And so, that means that things have to get in there. We talked about the fact that there are going to be, as Hingham, Tom mentioned, that, you know, one of the things I think that was important to Paul and I, and that we heard from Margaret and from the high school sports, were that any sort of a fee on the high school sports would most likely get passed on to the student athletes, because, you know, there's an inability for the school to, you know, to bear that cost. And so, an important consideration for Paul and I was, let's not have there be a user fee for the student athletes. And, you know, but at the same time, we have Hingham Maritime, who is kind of hosting this activity, so how do we make sure that Hingham Maritime has an opportunity to derive some revenue that will allow them to maintain the building, the facility? So, we then started talking about special events, and a number of special events that would be a different way to raise that revenue as opposed to feing our student athletes. So, you know, what I would ask is, you know, for folks who are interested in reading this, I'd ask you to kind of read the whole thing, because there are things that are connected. So, you know, for example, the question of not having a user fee is connected to the special events. And, you know, there are other things like that that are, that are very connected. I would just say two other things. First is to thank Tom and Susan and Margaret for, you know, all the great work that was done here. And I would just close by saying, you know, I think, you know, you and I are kind of in a similar situation, I think. You know, not only are we both members of the Board of Selectmen, Paul and I have both had student athletes who have participated on the high school rowing team. And I don't know about your children, but my children have participated in programs at the Hingham Maritime Center. So, I kind of feel like, you know, as I think about these different constituencies, I've kind of got, you know, different hats on. I think there's a whole lot here to like. I think in, as, you know, as the late Nelson Ross used to say, in the outcome of any good negotiation is that, is that everybody feels like there were a certain number of their needs that were met. And I will tell you that Paul and I, and with the help of Tom and Susan and Margaret, we've worked really hard on that. And what we've tried to do is understand what are some of the most important things to various constituents, whether it be the advisory committee, the citizens of Hingham, or people who are on Barnes Wharf for a lot of the time. And we've really tried very, very hard to do that. And so, we also thought it was important to have a period where the public could look at this, and I'm very glad that we have kept to that. I think it will be a good blueprint for other similar endeavors as we go forward. So, I invite anybody who's interested to take a look at these documents, and I would ask you to forward, if you can, it really helps us, is to send the comments to Tom, because that makes sure Paul and I get them. If somebody sends me an email, you know, you do your best to get it, get it to the town administrator, to get it to your colleagues, but sometimes, sometimes things fall through the cracks on that. So, you can be assured that your feedback will be part of the conversation if you help us by sending it through Mr. Mayo.
Thank you. I just wanted a couple of things. I don't want to repeat. I agree with what you had to say. I just want everybody to understand the amount of work that went into this project. It was a much more in-depth, complicated, you know, in terms of levels and personalities and so forth than I could have ever imagined. But I think, you know, with Susan, Tom, and Mary, I will tell you that it was, it was a lot of work. And, you know, I know we started out a little slow, but once we got going, it was an absolute pleasure to work with those three individuals on this thing, because I knew we were all in it for the right reasons. We were trying to help people, we're trying to look out for everybody's interest, and believe me, there were plenty of interests, starting with the towns. And we wanted to put together something that was going to work, you know, something that maybe not be as perfect. So, if you comment on this and you want to tell us, maybe there's something collectively we missed, you know, we're hoping not. But anyway, you know, we think that this can become a reality in the very near future. That's where we're coming back in a few weeks. And, you know, it's one of those things where I think everybody can win by this. The town, the Maritime Center, the high school, the public, everybody can benefit by this, and that's what our goal was. And so, I appreciate all the patience you've had with us. I appreciate all the input you've put in over time, and I appreciate, you know, Margaret and the high school and Dodd, you know, being invested in this, because, you know, I don't think it would have been, I wouldn't have been comfortable with an end product unless I knew that it was something that you and Dodd had looked at. So, I don't know if you have any comments, Margaret, but...
Margaret, you need to come up to the microphone. I can't hear you on TV. Sorry. Anyone you want.
If you want to sit down. Yep. Okay. I just appreciate the opportunity to have some input into developing this. You know, every resident of this town values the waterfront, and to have our student athletes, it's just an extension of what the adults value. You know, our student athletes being able to take advantage of the waterfront and have a great opportunity in our sailing and our rowing programs. And that was our, we wanted to see that continue. And, you know, Mary, what you said about the timeliness of getting, you know, the docks in, the season, particularly the spring season, it's quite short, and it goes very quickly. And, you know, it was important that, you know, everyone understood that any kind of a delay would, you know, really impact, when you think of the life of a high school person, once, you know, once April rolls around, it's, especially in the spring, the amount of activities that go on in a high school kid's life, and especially if you're senior with exams and senior activities and graduation, all of that impacts into that spring season. And so, you know, being able to get out on the water is important to us. And I was glad that that was recognized. But, you know, I think it's a good document, and everybody will be able to enjoy the experience and the competitions that they have had in the past. So, I really appreciate being able to have some input on it.
I will say that, and if I didn't say it, I want to say it now, is that getting to where we are, or where we, you know, where we hope to be, wouldn't have been possible without the close working relationship with Hingham Maritime and the folks that were negotiating, you know, really with Tom and Susan. And so, this is, this is a, hopefully, something that, you know, if everything falls into place, that it'll be, like I said, a win-win for everybody and a great asset for the town. So, we're, I'm optimistic, hopeful, and I want to just thank everybody that participated.
Yep. Thank you.
And I don't know if anybody has a question briefly, because, you know, obviously, no one's probably read it, but if there's a quick question that someone wants to ask, fine. If not, you'll be submitting these questions or comments to us over the next 10 days. Hearing none? Maybe we should make a motion to extend to the 16th?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
15th is the meeting? I was thinking the day after the meeting, just in case.
That's what we've normally been doing, so...
Yes. And the reason we're just, just for the public, the reason we're just extending the existing lease agreement is to just bridge until, until hopefully we sign this, but we have to...
The RFP, you mean?
The RFP. Yeah, right. The RFP will expire, so we have to just keep that open.
Do I have a motion?
The third one.
Make a motion to extend the date to finalizing the lease on Barnes Wharf to December 16th.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Lady Roberts. Hey, Margaret? Let me give you a quote. I've requested, and I don't know if we can do it, but would love to have the girls' soccer team and the coach come maybe next week or the week after, and we could acknowledge them here at the meeting.
I'm sure they'd love to do that. They're on a, you know, they're on a real honeymoon of their success and enjoying that. I mean, I just received word today that Max Prep has an award for, that is sponsored by the National Guard, but they want to come to an event this winter and honor the girls' soccer team because they are ranked sixth nationally. And so, it's a pretty impressive celebration of them. So, we're hoping to choose a game, perhaps a basketball game, where we'll have a lot of fans anyway, and the National Guard will come and present a trophy. So, it's pretty exciting.
Take a, reach out to you in the next few days.
Sure thing.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Susan.
You have one item left on your agenda.
Okay.
A vote to a meeting of Tuesday. This would be a motion that we vote to withdraw from the Mayflower Municipal Health Group effective June 30th, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Well, this has been a long meeting, but a very productive one. Tom, I'd like to thank you for the work that you did. It was just discussed, even though I wasn't a part of it, I know you were energetically invested in the outcome, so thanks a lot for that, man.
Happy to do it. I just want to point out that none of this would have happened without Ted's leadership, as everything we do here is done himself.
Tom took this and ran with it and did an excellent job, and he deserves the credit he's received. Thank you. Very nice, very nice. Ted, thanks for getting the budget teed up and ready to go. Meeting one went well, so we'll hopefully get on a roll here. I guess at this point, is there anything you'd like to add before we sign off for the evening?
Good, thank you.
Okay. Ted?
I'll be really quick.
Sure.
First of all, I just let people know that Christmas in the Square tomorrow, and the Festival of Trees, former, as a former Mothers Club president, near and dear to my heart, that is a fundraiser. It raises money for Friends of the Homeless and for Hingham High School scholarships, so please stop in. Secondly, I just wanted to let people know, I've been meaning to in selecton reports, in November, the town actually did receive notification that the Supreme Judicial Court actually declined for direct appellate review of the Aquarian case. And so, you'll recall that the town filed an appeal, so that appeal will be heard by the appeals court. Briefings are in the process of being developed. The other thing I would just mention is that the Hingham High School senior class is endeavoring to have a community day of service that's going to take place in April, and the goal is for every member of the senior class to be participating in community service. They're calling it Harborman Helping Hingham. There is a website that's set up, and if there are any organizations who are looking for high school seniors to do volunteer work on that day, please go to their website, which is harbormanhelpinghingham.com. And they are, anyway, oh, over 300 students with a variety of talents, so, thank you. That's it for me.
Two quick things. I had the privilege tonight, on behalf of the board, to attend the Hingham Youth Football, and I'll call it a breakup gathering in town, and the purpose of it was to honor Tom Hoffman for his 15 years of dedication to the program, and couldn't think of a person more deserving of our praise in terms of the citation, but our praise collectively as a town for the things he does. The one smart move I did, in addition to doing that, was to make sure that another person was recognized collectively at the board to a citation was Susan Rizzo, because that person, who I've come to know as well, is so invested in this town and the youth and the programs, that she gives so much of her time, that she was stepping down as secretary as well, so we gave her a citation. And, you know, it just couldn't, couldn't happen to two nicer people. The only other thing I will say, and I'm not sure if Tony Viola wants me to say this, but I'm going to say it anyway, he has been reaching out to a program, I guess, that maybe has happened every year, where they gather people on Saturday, and it might be Sunday. If you can reach out to me or to the board, we could facilitate this. They're looking for people to volunteer to help break leaves for people in town that are unable to do it, people that certainly have deserved our respect, and we're talking about veterans and...
Elderly.
Elderly and so forth, people who have lost loved ones recently and unable to do it. And I couldn't think of a better thing to do as we get closer to Christmas than to give...
Got a number?
My number?
Oh, you got a number for people to call?
Well, I'm going to have them reach out to me or the office. And I did receive it by email, but, you know, I will give you my cell, 617-413-3607, and/or contact us at 741-1400 here. And tomorrow, I will have all that information with Tom or Sally, and if anybody wants to help this weekend, it starts about 9:30 on Saturday morning.
I'd like to commend the residents to a ceremony that's going to be held on December 7th, 2016, at the Hingham Shipyard, sponsored by the Veterans Service Office, and it's to commemorate the 75th anniversary of the dastardly surprise attack on Pearl Harbor by the Japanese. You know, the Veterans Service Office, I think, has been energized in recent years, and I think this is a good opportunity to...
and I think this is a good opportunity to not only reflect on what happened there, but show our continuing support of the veterans. John Asher was Veteran of the Year, named Veteran of the Year, and he, he appears on the Facebook site, and his accomplishments are quite formidable, quite, very modest man, you never know that to talk to him, but he is, that's worth looking into. And finally, I'd like to commend the Hingham Police. I think it's been through a very, very difficult period. It's conducted itself, the chief, the deputy, with, with a high degree of professionalism and restraint, and, and in the dogged pursuit of justice. I think we saw an excellent example of a very professional vetting process that the candidates that we select as police officers go through to ensure that we get only the finest men and women on the department. This is something, you know, again, at the risk of repeating myself, I think this is one of the most important decisions that I make as a selectman. So I thank the department for its assistance in, in helping me make this decision. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn and wish you all good night.
So moved.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Good night.